Hey, Beth.
Hi.
You hear us all right?
I sure can.
Okay, I'm just gonna put it back on mute until we start the executive meeting. Mr. Hillsinger, I have six o'clock.
I can always count on you, Wayne.
Let's call a meeting to order. I don't think we need to take roll.
I'll take, I'll take roll real quick.
Go ahead.
Mr. Hillsinger?
Here.
Mr. Sneed, Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Adele?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Ms. Hart?
Here.
Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
But the record show eight, and with that, we'll go to, um, need a motion to accept the meeting.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Second emotion, discussion.
Seeing not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it eight zero. Uh, next item, uh, status sheet, need a motion to accept.
So moves.
Second, discussion, seeing not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, eyes have it eight zero. Next, we'll go to nominated committee. What do you want us to do there?
Accept the report of the nominated committee, which you all just voted on for the, uh, for the current slate.
I make a motion that we accept them.
The report of the nominated committee.
Report of the nominating committee.
Second.
Discussion, seeing not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, eyes have it eight zero. Uh, no ordinance, no committee of the whole, no comprehensive planning. You want to do the presentation now?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go to the presentation now.
Good evening, commissioners. It's been a while since I've been before you, so let me introduce slash reintroduce myself. My name's Paul Weatherford. I'm the senior planner for long-range planning here at St. Louis County, and I'm leading the St. Louis County 2050 Equitable and Sustainable Comprehensive Plan, um, project. It's been a long time. I know we've been talking about this for, it seems like, uh, forever. Um, maybe not quite that long, but it's finally here. And I just, before we get into it, I want to, uh, introduce our project team. Um, they've, some of them are, are local. We have county residents, and some of them have, have come in from Dallas to be here this evening. Um, so Stephen Dwan is the project manager, um, has more than 12 years of experience working on comprehensive plans, resilience plans, master plans, economic development plans, um, and is based out of the, the Dallas area. Sean Tapia is the deputy project manager. Uh, Sean brings over eight years of experience on long-range planning efforts and is also a certified in vision sustainability professional. Uh, we have Daniel C. Um, he's a planner, um, with, uh, several years of experience, has worked on a few comp plans, um, in the county, um, mostly municipalities, um, in, in sort of West County. Um, and then virtually, on the, uh, virtual attendee, we have Beth Quindry, who's our engagement lead from Shaki Consulting. Um, she's, Beth is based here in, in St. Louis. Um, Beth has over 20 years of experience assisting local governments with community engagement, um, at a variety of scales. Um, and, you know, as a county resident, brings, brings a deep knowledge, um, of the community and, and its residents and the issues facing, um, St. Louis County. We have Catherine Werner, who is also a county resident, um, and is our sustainability and climate lead. Um, Catherine has more than 30 years of experience, uh, working in the sustainability field, is lead certified in a master ecologist. Uh, Catherine spent 12 years as the city of St. Louis Sustainability Director, um, and brings a, a deep knowledge of the ecological, ecological issues facing our region. And then we have, uh, John Hole here with us, um, founder of H3 Studios, uh, which is a local firm, um, and is our land use and open space lead. Um, John brings over 25 years of planning and design expertise. Um, additionally, John is a professor of architecture and urban, urban design at Wash U, um, and served as the director of urban design for the city of St. Louis for seven years. So with that, I will let, I keep forgetting that I'm not supposed to turn away from the microphone. I'll let Stephen take it away.
Our many viewers on YouTube, thank you for staying close to the microphone.
Make sure to subscribe to the St. Louis County 2050 program if you're on YouTube, apparently. Uh, so hello, commissioners. Thank you for having us. My name is Stephen Dwan. I'm with AECOM. I'm the project manager for this effort, and we are very, very excited to work with you all, your planning team, on this really, uh, ambitious effort. So, uh, we're going to cover today, uh, a little bit of a short agenda, mostly talking about what the foundational principles that our collective team is taking to approach this project. Uh, we realize that it is a complicated and nuanced and ambitious effort, and so we've taken a lot of care into framing the way we think is a, a good way to approach this that lets us both deal with issues broadly, but also investigate, uh, issues deeply in the places where we think they make the most impact. So we're gonna walk you through today, uh, some of those principles, the overall process that we are undertaking, uh, and then close with sort of the next steps, particularly with the engagement portion of this effort. Uh, so with that, um, I want to start with, you know, we have this, this quote on the screen here. I want to emphasize with one of the principles that we are approaching this plan with is treating it as a platform. And what I mean by that is that we view it as an opportunity for us to jump to lots of different topic areas and issues and work on them, but also elevate and accelerate other initiatives that are already happening in the county and in the region. So we don't view it as this very, I would say, narrowly defined, we're just making a plan. For us, it is a, a platform and initiative that allows us to help the county in a myriad different ways. Uh, and, uh, it's been a long time, obviously, since the county has had a comp plan. And we do think it is a really great time to do one because, uh, on the screen here, we have a, a kind of a, a motion graphic of the aerial image of the change of the county and its surrounding environment over time. And I think what is really readily apparent is that a lot of change has happened here. And we know that this change, uh, not only puts new policy pressures on you all as a commission, but also, uh, allows for new opportunities to think through what is the appropriate and, and best path forward future for the county. So our hope here is to really look at this change and do a couple of different things with this plan. The first is that we know we can't predict the future, but we know it will change. And what we can do is really help and work with you all, work with your staff, work with various departments and partners to really investigate what are, one, the most ideal policies that can, we can really take forward to actually enact change here. But two, also spend a lot of time investigating which policies are the most robust and resilient to change over time. We don't want this to be just a static document in time. We want it to be very much a tool that allows you to still get the, the, the outcomes you all want as a county long-term, no matter what kind of changes and, and uncertainties come in the future. Uh, the second, in addition to dealing with that uncertainty, is we all know that you all have a lot of existing great policies and investments in place. Uh, but you also aren't masters of the universe. You don't have control of, over everything. But we can use this plan to help allow you all to exert sort of as many influence and pull as many levers as a commission as possible to getting the outcome we want. So our hope by using this, this, this comprehensive planning effort is to really illuminate what are the different tools, using the plan as a platform, that you all can leverage to get the outcome you want as, as a body here, working with the county and, and the staff. So, uh, our framework really, as you can tell, is meant to be somewhat of a living and fluid approach that allows us to maximize the opportunities where we can, uh, really define the outcomes that are the most important to us, and chart a very clear path on how we can get there. This is the part where the presentation should go forward.
Oh, yeah, point towards this door. That's the computer it's connected to is back there.
I am pointing as close to the door, Mel, as I...
What?
I do have the presentation memorized, so we keep going, but for the, for the vast viewers online, I, oh! Opening the door. If I, if I had to guess, I bet this will start skipping forward because I've clicked the button many times, but I will go ahead and proceed. So I've talked a little bit about why we're doing this comprehensive plan. Uh, my colleagues behind me are gonna talk a little bit more about the process and why we're doing it. But first, I'm gonna turn it over to my colleague, Sean Tapia, our deputy, to talk about exactly what is a comp plan, in case you're not as familiar with what we plan to put into one, and how we will turn that into our kind of implementation path forward in the future.
Thanks, Stephen. Good evening, everyone. So like Stephen mentioned, we sort of have two priorities we're trying to work toward with this plan, and he walked you through why we're coming to it. So what really are we talking about here? So you can see on the screen, we've got a lot of different topic areas that we typically cover in a comprehensive plan: transportation, open space, land use, housing, economic development. All of these things are critical. Your county departments all lead a lot of initiatives around these different topic areas, uh, to help the county move forward and continue this important work. So why are we getting into that with a comprehensive plan, and what are we really trying to accomplish here with this? The biggest piece is figuring out how each of them connect to each other. How does housing relate to transportation? How does that impact economic development? Infrastructure, open space, um, and how do these all work together, and what are we trying to get out of them? We don't want to have them operate in a silo. We don't want to analyze them or create recommendations around them solely for housing or just for transportation because they all impact each other. And that's a very critical component of what we're going to go through, uh, this evening as, and as well as over the next couple of years, in engaging in this comprehensive plan process. And one of the things you'll notice in the diagram here on the outside of all these bubbles is the emphasis we have on equity and sustainability. That's one of the more unique things, I think we would say, about, um, the St. Louis County Comprehensive Plan, St. Louis County 2050, is the emphasis and very specific and intentional uses and inclusion of sustainability and equity. They are big components of planning now, and they're even bigger as we move forward for each of these topic areas. So as we move throughout this process, one of the things we're going to do is use the lens through equity and sustainability to ensure that we are approaching them as fairly and as intentionally as possible as we move throughout this plan, working through the different policies and analyses. Let me see if I can get this to advance. Oh, it works. I'm just better at it than you, I guess. Um, so as you can see here, there's a lot of different individual topics that fall under housing, that fall under economic development, what areas have changed as we look at different land uses, as we look at growth. Are we trying to maintain the development patterns in certain areas of the county versus identify them for growth? Where do we want to see new development? Where do we want to preserve certain areas through conservation, um, and environmental preservation? And how do we get to those points? And so this isn't just a long-term vision. I know it says that here, that's what long-range planning is, but we also want to emphasize how we get to that long-term vision. It's not just, we've drafted this plan and all these recommendations, and if we implement them, we get to 2050, and it's perfect, right? We know that we need to focus every one year, every two years, every five, every 10, to get us to that point in 2050, and continually assess and measure what our successes are moving forward. And so a big component of this plan will be identifying what those metrics are for measurement so that when we're done drafting it, Jacob and his team and the rest of the great planners over here can implement those pieces and make sure, hey, we identified this area for new residential development or environmental conservation or preservation. Are we hitting those goals? Are we reaching them? And, and does the plan identify how we get to that? How do we maneuver around that if we're not as successful in the first couple of years? And how do we make sure, again, everything is connected and that we're paying attention to what those connections are? So that's gonna be a very unique component of this comprehensive plan. So the last thing I'll talk about here is what are the outcomes we're trying to get towards? You know, we know we need to look at housing, we need to look at transportation, but why? What are we getting to with those? What are the outcomes we're trying to achieve in looking at those different topic areas as we move throughout this process over the next couple of years? And it's, here's some here listed that we've pulled together: safe and thriving communities, catalyzing growth in opportunity areas, better housing opportunities for everyone, resiliency, all of these great things. One thing that's not listed here that we're gonna talk about here in a couple of minutes is how we identify these outcomes for the community, for the stakeholders, for the residents that live here, for the owners and operators of businesses, their employees, everyone. We aren't just going to come in and identify these off the cuff because we're great at our jobs, even though we are. We want to make sure it's grounded in what the community sees as opportunities and what they know their issues are. So when we get into the engagement component, that's what's gonna be our grounding basis for a lot of these outcomes. Um, and that's what we'll get to here in just a minute, but that's what we're really trying to get to with these outcomes, and I'm gonna have my colleague Daniel come up and explain to you how we get there throughout this process.
Hello, good evening. Uh, so I'm gonna give an overview of the comprehensive planning process. So the way we structure these, uh, planning processes divided into four primary phases, typically, uh, happening across the seasons this year. Uh, the first phase is what we call a learning and talking, and that's part of the reason why we're here. Uh, it's to have listening sessions with you folks, uh, as well as meetings with individual council members of the East West Gateway. It's really our team here trying to do this existing conditions analysis, have initial conversations to get a baseline understanding of where St. Louis County now. And all, this effort will culminate into an existing conditions report. Uh, the icons and the white text you see are some of the examples of the tasks and efforts that we are intent to carry out, uh, during this phase one. Uh, and you also see an icon about community outreach, uh, which I'll kind of give a more general overview in the later slides. So after the, uh, conclude, uh, the learning and talking phase, we'll proceed to the second... Make sure I point this right here. There we go. Overshot it. Uh, the second phase in spring, that's what we call an idea diagnostic. So in the first phase, we answer the question where St. Louis is county, where St. Louis County is. Uh, this, uh, the question that we're trying to answer in the second phase is, what, uh, what do St. Louis County should look like in 2050? So it's about creating that long-term vision from point A to point B. And, uh, phase two ideas diagnostic, a big part of it is about this effort. And moving on to, uh, our third phase, pathway to future, by then we've identified where we are at, what we want to be, and the third phase, pathway to future, is about how do we get there? So this is where a lot of more of our technical work is involved, uh, for example, creating future land use scenarios, policy analysis, drafting, uh, policy recommendations, planning recommendations of what a draft comprehensive plan. It's about how do we get from point A to point B? And to, uh, culminate, there we go. To culminate our work from phase one, phase two, and phase three, it will all go into a draft comprehensive plan, uh, in phase four, forward together, uh, that will happen in the fall and beyond. And from there, we'll begin to release it, advertise to the public, uh, get additional feedback, make revisions as necessary, and follow through the official adoption process. So overall timeline, we're officially kicking it, uh, the comprehensive planning process now, and with an anticipation completion date of, uh, fall 2025. So with the process, uh, with an overview of the general timeline, I'd like to give a general overview of our engagement highlights, our strategy and approach. Uh, so what, one of the, uh, focus we're trying to do is really reach out to hard-to-reach groups and high priority issues. Uh, we definitely want to do in-person engagement in every council district, but certainly across, uh, the council districts, and have targeted conversations, uh, with, uh, stakeholders, uh, through the planning process. And part of our engagement, uh, process, we also, uh, intend to have a, engage, uh, diverse, uh, activities. Uh, so these are, uh, the slides here. You see some of the, uh, activities we planned. Uh, one of them is a county, county-wide statistically valid survey. We anticipate in our engagement strategy, the first few months in the first phase, we relatively quiet, will be through this county-wide statistically valid survey. The intent is we use the survey to give us a good baseline analysis, uh, that we can back it up and, uh, to continue on with our subsequent work with a vision, draft recommendations, uh, as well, and bring it into a comp plan. And with these, we complement the, uh, the statistically valid survey with steering committee meetings, uh, visioning workshops, uh, community input workshops, community liaisons, uh, web-based, um, web-based outreach such as a project website, as well as our adoption presentations to the stakeholders, uh, county council, planning commission, and the key stakeholder groups. So this is a screenshot of our project website. Uh, we envisioned this as like our main information hub where, um, any information related to comprehensive planning process will be, uh, will be posted here. Uh, as, as we continue to move forward with the process, more contents will be uploaded here. Uh, we do think this will be a great, uh, way to virtually and efficiently, effectively engage, uh, the St. Louis County, uh, St. Louis County community in general. Uh, and one of the, uh, one of some of the features, uh, in the project websites, uh, allows you to join a mailing list, uh, to get updates, uh, if there's any new and upcoming engagement events with the plant, uh, planning process, as well as a preliminary, uh, vision exercise, letting us know in three words, three words, what are your, uh, vision and aspiration for St. Louis County? So all, uh, all in conclusion, uh, some, an overview of some of our next steps in the planning process. One, we'll be launching the statistically valid survey in February. Uh, we will launch, uh, a lot more of the in-person engagement activities in March. Uh, we'll be having stakeholder conversations. Uh, so for example, we'll be, uh, talking to East West Gateway tomorrow, uh, meetings with, uh, the council members, uh, as well as, uh, community profile and data analysis, uh, to set up the, our existing conditions analysis and report. So that really concludes our presentation and our overview of the, uh, St. Louis 2050. I'll open up for, uh, questions and answers. Thank you.
Anyone?
Hello? I guess I was, uh, a little bit confused about the timeline. Um, I thought you mentioned that it went through like the seasons of this year, but then you said it would wrap up at the end of '25. How, how did those two things go together?
Sure. Uh, by the time we get to the end of a lot of the technical work here, we expect to spend a lot of time doing a few things. One, working through various partners through adoption and implementation. And that includes working with various partners on the actual implementation pathway, even as we are near the, uh, completion of the formal planning document process itself. Uh, the other is that we do want to do sort of a, uh, at the, towards the end, making sure we visit with lots of different, both incorporate on and unincorporate municipalities to work with them on sort of tailoring the final conclusion to their specific needs. So the, uh, the way we kind of structure it, mostly because it's easier to understand, is our technical work will take, uh, the bulk of this calendar year, but the actual process all the way to the end will extend further as we work with communities on implementation.
Gotcha. So is it kind of like you'll have the comprehensive plan done at the end of this year, but the end of next year is really when it'll be more implemented and complete? Like, the draft will be final more so at the end of next year?
I, I think that's actually a part of the process that we would love you all's input on because in, in our estimation, that makes sense, but we recognize that certain communities may want to talk about certain topics longer. We may want to have a draft for more folks to provide feedback. Uh, generally, our framework is as you described, but we are open to that. In many ways, we're leaving that back in flexible because we are so focused on the implementation of this plan rather than as a purely static document.
I was curious if maybe the, the four steps that you had for this year, if they maybe took a little bit longer than anticipated, then it would go more into next year too? So that gave you more time, like a buffer, in order to get it completed by the end of '25, in case those four steps took a little bit longer than expected?
It, it, it could also, we also recognize that drawing out the process too long also has downsides to it too, so it's a balance, but I think generally R and T has always been to get through a lot of the policy work while we have as much momentum as possible, and then really spin the latter stages of the process on implementation and working with partners on actual next steps.
Yeah, I would say, just to add to that really quick, one of our partners that can't, couldn't be here this evening, uh, Rise Consulting Group, they're gonna be leading a lot of that capacity building within the local communities, both unincorporated and incorporated. And that's what Stephen is sort of referring to. As we get through the end of a lot of the technical components, we're gonna be engaging those folks throughout the process to make sure we're localizing this as much as we can and working towards implementation with them as directly as possible. So not just focusing on what the planning department team can do, but making sure that there's ownership throughout the county with different organizations, you know, different municipalities, unincorporated areas, different associations that already exist, but also just residents and business owners, folks that will be utilizing this whether they fully understand it or not right now. We want to spend a lot of time being intentional with everyone, as many folks as we can, and that's where that capacity building piece comes into play. And so where we're talking about fall and beyond, that's where the bulk of a lot of that work is going to, to come into play. As we get through the technical piece, it's like, okay, we figured out this is really what we want to pursue and promote and where we want to go with these policies and strategies. Now how do we start to get implementation going with all these different groups and within these different areas, so?
Anyone else? How intricate will you get in the communities in terms of land usage? We used to do community area studies, which would pretty much identify a, a piece of ground and say, here's the use for that piece of ground. And then people would come in and tell us what we could do with it.
So for our approach, I'll answer this two ways. We recognize that some communities, uh, have different preferences for how they want to handle implementation. Uh, some communities, let's say, for instance, you all might have more influence on zoning and land use. Some others might not, so it's a little bit of a multi-pronged effort. What I'll say is that from a comprehensive planning perspective, our approach has most certainly been to provide at minimum the broader context and analysis that helps couch those sorts of questions in a more quantifiable and, I would say, directed fashion. Uh, now, the actual level of, I would say, detail in land use or zoning will differ depending on what part of the county, uh, really needs that sort of work. So our approach, uh, and something we've said internally has been that we don't expect this plan to be everything to everyone. We want it to have value to everyone. We want it to have value to everyone. And everyone, what the, the, the ability for the comp plan to provide value might be differently in one community versus another. So while we're trying to pull several different pieces together to move in a unified direction for a greater outcome, we also recognize that there are different interests and different priorities in different parts of the county, which may change the level of detail in certain parts of the analysis and in parts of the plan.
And to add to what Stephen just said is that it's my expectation that this document serves as the foundation for future small area studies. It becomes that, that sort of high level that can sort of tie together a lot of stuff. So that, say, we go back to do another, I'll just theoretically say a South County, a South County study, we will be using, basically saying, the, the, the issues and the things that come out of the comprehensive plan will lead us directly into additional studies at that, at that level of specificity.
Anyone else?
St. Louis County is unique in that there's over 80 municipalities. So what type of efforts are you envisioning to make sure? Where are you going to draw the line? And deal with probably some backlash, because everyone isn't going to play nice probably, or want to make sure their municipality has a... I'm trying not to say anything on tour, but I just, there might be some difficulties dealing with the fragmentation of St. Louis County.
Yeah. Certainly, we, we've, we've thought a lot about that. In our general framework, and I think it's a good answer, has always been that we are looking for what is good for the whole county, and we recognize that there are different interests and different priorities. But what we can certainly do in this process, which alludes back a little bit to Jacob's answer, provide a framework with supporting analysis that really helps folks make good decisions around those, let's say, differences. What we most certainly want to be able to look at is if there are different policy ideas or investment ideas or infrastructure deployment, that we understand the collective impact on the county and its future. And then after that, it's up to various parties to really understand how they want to proceed forward. One of the best things we can do is provide the framework for what our priorities are and how we think we can get there. And then multiple parties can really figure out which pathway they believe they should choose to go forward. But at the bare minimum, we want to get to a place where, as much as we can, we can evaluate policy implications from an apples-to-apples perspective. And importantly for us, I know you mentioned the fragmentation question, oftentimes these policy decisions come down to trade-offs. And one of the most powerful things a comprehensive plan like this can do is really help evaluate trade-offs in policy decisions so that folks like yourselves can start, can chart that path forward into the future. So it's not expected to be a silver bullet, but it is expected to be a very strong north star, so to speak, on how we can get to where we want to go.
I think I would just add to that really quick, that the next phase of that, what we're trying to get to is also identify partners across the different issues. And if you're talking about fragmentation again, is we recognize that each community is unique and individual, but a lot of the times, they may not realize that they share similar issues, but also opportunities. And where can we start to help them identify, hey, if I work with this community or this organization, we have more resources, time, power to accomplish the goals we sort of collectively, again, going back to what Stephen was saying, want to accomplish as a group, but also individually as a community or an organization or something like that. So building up that sense of, again, ownership and then partnership together to work towards all of these unique as well as collective goals.
And to, to build on what Stephen and Sean said, for, just for the department, I also look at this as a, it's a relationship-building opportunity for St. Louis County, planning as well as for us as a, as an entire government, to, to help continue to build strong relationships with our municipalities and our municipal partners. And not just municipalities, but, you know, nonprofit agencies, any number of sort of entities that have, that have impact on the built environment. We really look at this as an opportunity to help strengthen those relationships. Will every relationship be perfect? No. And we're aware of that, but we're going to use this to build and use it as an opportunity to forge stronger relationships and to create new ones where ones don't currently exist.
It's a tool that could be used for resources to help us kind of more, get more, not necessarily answers, but just get us on a kind of a same plane field.
Absolutely. Yes. And so what I would say to this commission is that while traditionally, within the recent past, it has been, you know, the commission has dealt largely with zoning issues in unincorporated St. Louis County, there is a role for this commission in helping set a vision and a goal that can improve all of St. Louis County, not just zoning in unincorporated St. Louis County. And I'm really excited that, that we are embarking on this to, to do such a thing. I think that there's, there can be real synergies in the future for St. Louis County government and for planning and for this commission to help set some vision and goals for, for jurisdiction.
Beth, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I did. Good evening, everybody. Just when it comes to the municipal, municipal staff and leaders, I think there's a real craving, I think, that they have to actually tackle problems that they experience from a regional perspective. And so we're going to have this great opportunity to convene groups based on issues, thinking about things like housing and transportation. They can't, municipalities can't solve those problems, address those problems in a big way by themselves. And so giving them an opportunity to come together and think as a region is unique. And because we are fragmented, we don't get a chance to do it very often. But as someone who works individually with municipalities a lot, you know, you really do kind of hit this wall where, okay, there's only so much we can do about housing in our city limits, because it's a regional issue. So I think there's a real exciting opportunity to convene municipal partners on some of those regional issues and, and think about them together.
Only because Jacob stole some of our closing narrative already. We, we did want to leave you with the idea that one of the reasons why in our presentation we focus so much on kind of this threading or nexus of ideas is to a little bit address that question around fragmentation, not just fragmentation, let's say, of, of communities, but also ideas. Our perspective is that as a planning commission, this is a very appropriate forum to understand how one issue or one policy affects another, and that these things must be thought of in aggregate together. And so this plan, we hope, provides everyone, including you all, a platform to think holistically about the way these various issues do play together. And we hope to provide you all with the tools and analysis necessary to think through and push forward those policies that you all do want to do in a more integrated holistic way that brings together multiple parties and interests in the same direction.
Anything? All right. Appreciate you coming. Look forward to, as we go forward.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to the rest of the agenda, which is first item, PC 35-23, Charlotte Jane Mason.
Good evening, commissioners. Before you is PC 35-23, Charlotte Jane Mason, is a request for a change in zoning from R5 to R6's 4,500 square foot residence district, for two family residence on 2.1, 0.21 acres tract located on west side of Mackenzie Road, approximately 180 feet north of Gravel Road. I'm bringing this to you tonight as a letter of recommendation. As you may recall, the site is located in South County, and to the right of the screen is the subject site outlined in red. And this is bigger aerial photograph of the subject site and the surroundings. Again, tonight, I'm bringing to you a request for a change in zoning from R5 to R6's 4,500 square foot residence district. And the current zoning allows only single-family and single-family attached dwellings. It doesn't permit two-family dwellings. And this position property is, was developed as a density permitted in the R6's district before adopting 1965 St. Louis County zoning ordinance. The proposal is to use the existing building as a two-family. And as you may recall, the survey plan shown at the public hearing shows the, shows the retention of the existing lot of 9,242 square foot, and also features two separate driveways, front entryways, side entryways, rear garage, back pouches, and is also, none of the facilities is accessible from one side to the other on any level. Staff is recommending approval because the existing residential development along Mackenzie Road is well-established at the site and continues to be appropriate. The R6's residence district procedure is consistent with those two family residences in neighboring tract and accurately reflect the character of acting. The proposed use of the building for the two-family is both reasonable and appropriate at the site and with surrounding permitted developments. And only two-family dwellings are allowed, with no provision for multiple-family dwellings, because the lot is small. Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you. With that, we need a motion to, on the item plus it includes a letter going to council.
Motion to approve and send a letter to council.
Do we have a second? Second discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Eyes have it eight zero. And we'll go on to PC 37-23, Charles Tom Bowman.
Good evening, commissioners. This is PC 37-23, Charles Tom Bowman. The request is for a change in zoning from C8 and FPC8 to an amended development in the C8 Plan Commercial District and Flood Plan, Plan Commercial District and the R2 Residence District and FPR2 Flood Plan Residence District. The proposal is to facilitate the development of an advertising sign on a 2.85 acre tract on the north side of Manchester Road, approximately 350 feet west of Barrett Station Road. As you may recall, the site is located in West County, and you can see the site outlined in red on the right. Here's a larger aerial. You can see the proximity to, in the adjacent Commercial District, whose C8 ordinance actually governs, governs use at the site and Grand Glaze Creek running through the parcel. The request is, like I said, a change in zoning from C8 and FPC8 to an amended development in the C8 and FPC8 and R2 and FPR2. The site is currently vacant, and the governing ordinance prohibits advertising signs, hence the need for a public hearing to discuss permitting advertising signs. Here's a larger proposal for use, land use at the site. The northern 1.76 acre tract would be, would have experienced a change in zoning to a residential district to remove commercial development in the floodplain. The southern 1.09 acre would be that C8 and FPC8 to facilitate the proposed advertising sign, the development of that sign. Here's a specific site development plan for the advertising sign. The proposal is for one digital sign, a 14 by 48-foot advertising sign that's 35 feet above street level, but 45 feet tall in total. At public hearing, there was discussion about permitting a curb cut. The department had concerns and reservations about it and inquired whether maintenance would be, would be able to be conducted without a curb cut on Manchester. And the petitioner said that that would be possible, so is now not showing a curb cut and no permanent parking spaces for maintenance staff. And you can see the proposed sign outlined in that red oval. Here are architectural elevations for the proposed signs, facing one from the east on Manchester and one from the west. At this time, the department is recommending approval. The department believes that the C8 Plan Commercial District, FPC8 Flood Plan Planned Commercial District, the R2 Residence District and the FPR2 Flood Plan Residence District are all appropriate for this location. The department believes that an advertising sign could be appropriately cited at the location without disturbing nearby residents and travelers using Manchester Road. And the department strongly prefers limiting curb cuts along Manchester Road to protect pedestrians from oncoming traffic. At this time, I would request a motion.
Okay, we need a motion either for or against. Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second motion.
Discussion, anyone?
I have a question.
Yep.
Are we approving? What about, it looks like there's a lot of trees in this area. What, what exactly are we approving if we allow this, this to go up?
The only permitted use, if a new C8 district was established here, the only permitted use would be that of, of the billboard, of the advertising sign. And we've written it such that basically they can't clear the whole site. It would just be the, what's necessary to develop the billboard. And then the remainder, as Peter said, the bulk of it would be going back to the R2 Residence District.
And in that case, even the R2, it, because of floodplain issues, you, there won't even be residences developed on it. It's just to clean up the zoning.
That's true, and that...
Yeah.
And it sort of has the same impact on the C8 parcel as well. It's entirely the floodplain, so that further limits any other clearing or, or...
Development. That, that parcel will never be developed or structured because of the nature of the creek and, and the flooding issues at that site.
Anyone else, questions? We have a motion to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Eyes have it eight zero. And the last new item is PC 38-23, Jared Fryman.
Good evening. PC 38-23, Jared Fryman, is a request for a conditional use permit in the M1 Industrial District for a proposed use of a gymnasium, including personal training, for a tract size of 0.41 acres located on the northwest quadrant of Midwest Industrial Boulevard and Ashby Road. This is coming before you tonight as a letter of recommendation. As the commission may recall from the public hearing, this site is located in mid-county, and on the right is the site outlined in red. Here is a larger aerial of the site outlined in red, just showing that industrial uses surrounding the area, and along the other side of Ashby Road is Overland. So this is coming before you as a request for a conditional use permit. All CUP requests have to be evaluated and a decision made based on whether the proposed use is consistent with good planning practice, can be operated in a manner that is not detrimental to the permitted developments and uses in the district, can be developed and operated in a manner that is visually compatible with the permitted uses in the surrounding area, and is deemed essential or desirable to preserve the and promote the public health, safety, and general welfare of St. Louis County. The M1 Industrial District doesn't, which is in this area, is where it's adequate for public utility facilities required by an industry. So gymnasiums are a conditional use in the M1 Industrial District, which is why it is here before you tonight. And again, the proposed use is for a gymnasium, including personal training studio. This is the preliminary site development plan. The petitioner noted at public hearing that they do plan to reutilize the 4,175 square foot building. They have seven existing parking spaces and one ADA accessible space. And then they are proposing two additional parking spaces to the north and the, behind the building. Staff is recommending and has written a letter of recommendation in the, in approval as the proposal passes the four-pronged conditional use permit test. As the proposal passes the four-pronged conditional use permit test, the proposed use is in keeping with the developments in the area. The proposed use is at the location will be less intense than other industrial or office uses. Indoor recreation, specifically a gymnasium and personal training studio, is desired and promotes the public health, safety and general welfare of St. Louis County. And locating a gymnasium with personal training studio in the M one industrial district is consistent with good planning practice by co-locating the use with office and warehouse developments. So at this time, I ask for an approval of the letter of recommendation.
Okay, with that, we need a motion.
Strong move.
We have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, we have a motion for approval with a letter of recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Eyes have it eight zero. And with that, we'll go to old business. First item, P C thirty-one dash twenty-three, Natavia Boyd Wells.
P C thirty-one dash twenty-three, Natavia Boyd Wells, was also a request for a conditional use permit in the R three residence district for twenty-point-six-two acres located on the south side of Redmond Road, approximately five hundred fifty feet east of Talbot Court. The proposed use for this site is for a respite care, emergency respite care, but also for a childcare for special needs children. As the commission may recall from public hearing, this site is located in North County and as you can see, the site is outlined in red on the right. So this site is again primarily surrounded by single-family homes. To the left of the site is a senior living facility and then to the right of the site going more east is the R and B Rising Stars petition that the this commission did have a request for a conditional use permit earlier last year. So again, with all conditional use permits, we do look and evaluate and a decision be made based on the four-pronged test that I discussed previously. The current zoning is R three for the residence district and currently the site is a vacant pri was a vacant private high school with athletic field. And they are proposing a child daycare center for special needs children and emergency respite care. So this is the preliminary site development plan that was shown to this commission at public hearing. As the commission may recall, and it was in your staff report, the the petitioner did propose a fence along the road. However, after communication with them, they did decide that they do not need the fencing. And so we went back to this original preliminary site development plan to as part of your recommend the report. So they do intend to reutilize the existing building and parking spaces and they have three access points to the site along Redmond Road. So staff is recommending reducing access to the site via Redmond Road as directed by the St. Louis County Department of Transportation and Public Works. It can be up to them as to as they work with transportation and public works, which one would be more suitable. And then trash shall be located three hundred and fifty feet away from Redmond Road as approved on the site development plan. So the red line kind of shows where that three hundred and fifty-foot barrier would Staff is recommending approval of this petition. The proposed use is in keeping with the development pattern along Redmond Road. The proposed use at the location will be less intense than a high school and will not be detrimental to the surrounding developments. The proposed use located among both religious and educational uses makes this request reasonable and desirable to promote the public health, safety and general welfare of St. Louis County and an educational education-oriented use for special needs children in the proposed location is consistent with good planning practice. So at this time, we do ask for a recommendation of approval.
Okay, we need a motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, anyone?
I just had a question about the the trash location.
Yes.
It looked like on the site plan that the line was not.
So three hundred, it might not be just based upon how my drawing skills. Depending on how well my drawing skills were, might not be fully parallel.
About where that those like four or five striped spaces are kind of the top right of the building is an existing sort of loading area and that is where the dumpster that's there is located right now. So yeah, it would go a bit, it probably is a bit further than the the line, but.
Staff basically wrote it so that way, the three hundred and fifty feet, if you were to measure it from the other, the parking lot closest to the west, they would never be able to put a trash dumpster in that parking lot, but also preventing it from basically putting it back right where they have it currently on the site and preventing it from ever being closer to Redmond Road.
But yeah, it would technically be measured perpendicular from Redmond, right?
I think reading the map, I looked at it the same way I think that you were, Ms. Hart, because when I looked at it, I'm like, aren't we measuring it therefore from the wrong direction? But I think what they what they did was that the line, it it's kind of like the line leads you to three hundred and fifty feet, whereas it should the line.
Yeah, the line would.
This line should have been parallel to Redmond Road for readability as a map.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yes. So just as a readability issue, next time when you're showing that, it should be parallel to what you're keeping it away from.
Yes.
No, fewer.
Skin sideways.
I read it that same way.
I, yeah, looking at it now, I'm like.
That was my only question. I just want to make sure we weren't approving something that didn't make any sense.
Anyone else have anything, question?
The property, I guess that would be east of that building. Is that also a daycare?
Yes, the one to the east was the petition of R and B Rising Star, which was another conditional use permit to allow for childcare.
That was the Rising Star.
And I think that one was a more the conventional sort of childcare center where this one has this kind of special curriculum and the the respite aspect as well.
Okay, anyone? Seeing none, we have a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Eyes have it eight zero. And with that, next item, P C twenty-five dash twenty-three, Wheaton Properties.
So this this is a letter of recommendation consistent with the commission's actions from the December, possibly the November executive meeting. We spent some time with the petitioner, making sure that they understood the conditions of development here. This is the site where the proposed use is warehousing, wholesaling, storage and then minimal, minimal melting of metals. So we went back and forth with them to make sure that they understood the conditions of development. But the the letter before you is consistent with the commission's recommendation of approval.
Okay, we need a motion.
Strong move.
Discussion, we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Eyes have it eight zero, thirty-two, twenty-three, thirty-three dash thirty-three, Islamic Society District. Just a letter.
This is also a letter. We spent similarly, we spent a little bit of time with the petitioner, making sure they they understood the conditions. So this is also consistent with the commission's initial action.
Okay, we need a motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Eyes have it eight zero. We already did thirty-five dash twenty-three.
And thirty-eight twenty-three. The next one. Yes. So the first is a resolution of intent, basically a revision of the previous resolution of intent we brought to you to open up the zoning ordinance to look at a couple of different things. So when we first brought it to you, it was mostly about site design criteria and accessory uses and definitions within the zoning ordinance. But as we've been discussing it and while we're doing a text amendment, any a text amendment anyway, we revised it to have a couple more, to open up a couple more sections of the code. The two main ones are the conditional use permit procedure. There are some things that have happened in state statute and just legislative actions that sort of it's it's time to look at it again in light of some of those, some of that case law. And then the other main sort of use that we want to look at are local government facilities as a land use. So police stations, fire stations are permitted and basically all of the zoning districts. We want to look at them as well to see where government facilities are also appropriate. So those are the two additions. Other than that, this is generally the same textament resolution you saw at the end of last year.
And in addition to those items, Mel is also opening up and looking at the administration enforcement permits and violations of the zoning ordinance. So we're having some initial conversations about zoning approvals, how to streamline that, how to make sure that zoning approvals are within one work, within one work group at the county. And that is leading us to want to make some revisions to the zoning ordinance to reflect what we want to be our future structure for zoning approvals, so that we would also be opening up that for your for your consideration.
I would say that's sort of the theme of this text amendment is increased understanding and streamlining of some of the processes we have have in there. So kind of along the vein of like the site development plan section rewrite that we did, this is to streamline some of the stuff that's that's in the book.
So I'm sorry, tell me what this is again?
So to change what's permitted, to change the actual text of the zoning ordinance, uses that are permitted in districts, things like lighting design landscaping, to change what the words actually say in the zoning ordinance, the commission has to have a public hearing to to make a recommendation to the council to amend the ordinance. So you you, the commission, do that by adopting a resolution to have the public hearing. So public hearing for this would be pretty low-key. It's not like a petition, a land-based petition where there's a petitioner, it'll be us presenting it to you. Typically, there's not a lot of public interest in a text amendment. And then in February, we would bring you a recommendation of drafted changes to to the zoning ordinance. So we did it recently. I think the most recent one, we increased our fees. We had to do a text amendment to change what the zoning ordinance set our fees were. Similarly, for other procedures or or uses, that's the process.
Amendment, meaning you've changed the text.
Of the zoning ordinance, correct.
Of the ordinance, and then we would have a public hearing here?
Yes.
In February?
We'll have the public hearing. This will actually be on the January twenty-second public hearing, so there will be a couple other, you know, traditional petitions. And then we will sort of broadly describe what we're thinking about looking at and then in February, bring you a staff report outlining those with our analysis.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing that we have a motion for a public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Eyes have it eight zero. Next item?
All right. P C forty-six dash nineteen, Panera. This is a request for an extension of time for the commencement of substantial work or construction as required by conditional use permit nine hundred sixty-seven. The proposal was for a fast food restaurant with drive-through facilities on a tract of one-point-one acres located on the south side of Gravoy Road, approximately three hundred fifty feet west of Tesson Ferry Road. As the commission may recall, this site is located in South County and the site is outlined in red on your right. So just a little timeline for the planning commission tonight. The planning commission did forward a letter of decision for approval to the county council for P C forty-five nineteen and forty-six nineteen, Panera, on January sixth, two thousand and twenty. The county council received and filed the letter of decision and the conditional use permit nine hundred sixty-seven became effective on February fifth of two thousand and twenty. Subsequent to that, in July of two thousand and twenty-one, the developer did request an extension of time with the planning commission to submit a site development plan. The developer at that time noted that due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, Panera had froze all funding for the project and the planning commission found the request for the extension of time to be justified and extended the site development plans' middle date to February fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. A site development plan for Panera with a drive-through facilities was approved by the planning department on November seventh of two thousand and twenty-two. And to date, Panera decided to not move forward with the development. And so now it's coming back before you for the request of extension of time in order to allow for a Taco Bell with drive-through facilities to come through. So we are recommending approval of the request for an extension of time for the commencement of substantial work or construction as required for by C U P nine sixty-seven for a fast food restaurant with drive-through facilities, just due to this unforeseen change in occupants from Panera to Taco Bell. And staff would also note that staff will have to review a new site development plan with them and then the planning commission will see that site plan and will review it and the architectural elevations that go along with that site plan. So at this time, I ask for a motion.
Okay, we need a motion.
Strong move.
We have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
What is the deadline, the extension set for?
I believe we said February.
We've given them two more years.
February of twenty-six?
Correct, February of two thousand and twenty-six. And so the commission has seen several extensions of time for for petitioners to get their site plans approved, but I think this is the first one I've seen where they're coming for a different deadline in the C U P. First, they have a deadline eighteen months to get a site plan approved, but then they have two, sometimes it's three years, to complete, to do substantial completion, which the zoning ordinance defines as basically footings and foundation. So this will give them two years to get a new plan approved and to get foundation, footings and foundation permits.
Does it matter that the extension of February of two thousand and twenty-three expired? Or we're past that?
So it's, we're basically giving them the chance to to kind of start over now that this part would be extended. It's sort of is basically like Taco Bell needs to to do what Panera already had done. So this, we're we're sort of saying is covering both of the aspects. It's covering an extension of time for the site plan and moreover, the bigger one that's expired, the substantial completion.
Gotcha, thank you.
So it hasn't happened a lot, at least that I've seen.
Right, and so to to also to speak to Mr. Fagan's question, which was because this has already expired, but it has been the 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 policy of this commission that if the expiration has been within a reasonable amount of time, that that it that it exercises its power to extend that time. If the time period became far more unreasonable years is when this this commission has typically become far more skeptical of those requests and sent them back to public hearing.
Right.
When did it expire?
Less than a year ago.
Technically, they did meet the requirement to have a site plan approved. They just never used that site plan to get permits. But when the commission recommended amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding site development plans, an approved site development plan also has an expiration date. So I'm not sure if their plan has technically also expired or if it could be getting close, but technically, they've met the C U P requirement of getting a plan approved in the prescribed timeline.
Correct. And one thing I would also note about this is that our expectation is is that there will be some, I think some improvements to the overall site design is that the previous the previous design showed two drive-through lanes. This will have one drive-through lane, so it will be a lower intensity typically Taco Bell see fewer, see fewer vehicular trips than than Panera's do. They have sort of different time timeframes when when people visit them as well. So it's a little bit smaller of a building.
Smaller amount of pavement.
Smaller footprint, smaller, less pavement. So there's some, there's some improvements.
That's true.
This is assuming that Taco Bell follows suit.
That is correct.
This is also true, yes. But they did seem eager.
Thank you.
Did we, we did a motion, didn't we?
No, I don't believe there's.
I don't have it. I actually, I am sorry, I have Mr. Taylor as the motion and Christopher, Mr. Bedell is the second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Eyes have it eight zero. We'll go on to site plans.
Did um, did the commission look at the plans?
Yes.
Okay, so do you want to do them together?
Is that okay with everybody? We'll do them together.
Okay.
So we need a motion.
We need a motion to approve the plans as presented. Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Eyes have it eight zero. You think with the good of the order?
Yes.
One item for the good of the order.
Well, two items. So Summer, would you come down to the podium, Summer, but while Summer's walking down here?
Yeah, Summer!
Um, the, we did not do a. The, we did not do a, um, education item this evening. We just didn't, we thought that with the, with, um, AE Comm coming to talk tonight, that was going to be probably enough talking, um, but
Educational.
Yes, so they had their own, we had education with them, but we do intend to, um, at your executive session in two weeks, uh, to bring to you all a discussion of conditional use permits, um, conditional uses in general and just the procedure, um, and sort of the legal framework around conditional uses. So that's
And that's in two weeks. So if you have any, you know, if you, if you have questions about conditional uses or conditional use permits that we can address, let us know, send them to us and we'll make sure we address them in our, in our spiel.
So, um, I would like to introduce to the commission the newest planner that is on staff. So I have, uh, with us, we have Summer Jing. So she just started on Tues, last Tuesday. Um, so this is her fifth day, uh, at the office, her first job as a planner, but not your first professional, um, experience. Um, and I'm really excited to have Summer with us. So Summer, would you, um, please just tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. Um, so I'm Summer. I, uh, graduated in 2020 from Dartmouth College with a BA in quantitative social science. So basically that's a major where you do half of your classes in statistics and then the other half in social science. And I picked geography. Um, it was really interesting to me to see landscape analyses and understand how both policy and like social, uh, factors play into land use. So I'm really excited to be here.
So Summer, uh, is a native of New York, but she is a St. Louisan by choice, at least for the last couple of years.
Yes, I've been here for two years.
Um, and we're really excited to have Summer, um, to have Summer with us. So welcome, Summer.
Thank you.
Welcome. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah.
With that, I think that I would be happy for us to adjourn for this evening, not that I'm the chair, so.
The only other item is no meeting next Monday.
Right.
Public hearing on the 22nd. I think we have four petitions.
Yeah.
One of which being the text amendment.
Right. And the other three I think are, will be pretty low.
They're pretty, um, yeah, low, low intensity.
Yeah, pretty low intensity. Um, I think that we're going to have a good petition coming in, um, February or March for a, an affordable housing project, um, coming up that I think will be a, I think a really great opportunity for, um, you know, to increase the housing supply. Um, so I think I'm really looking forward to that petition. That'll be coming up in a couple of months.
Do I? Do you share what county?
I mean, it's here and say, I mean, it's in, uh, or which district?
North.
It's in, it's in the first.
It's in the first, I believe, yes.
I think, believe it's in the first district.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of first district
So, um, yep, so it'll be, we will be very glad it's very near, uh, public transit. So I think there, there's, there'll be some real interest. So when, when we get the actual application is when we can discuss it, but, um, but there's some good stuff coming in the pipeline, so.
Okay. With that, we need a motion to adjourn?
Show moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Both. Eyes have it eight zero. And we are out of here.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Take care.